Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Melissa Thomas with FNN News TV. Thank you guys for tuning in to this week's edition of the FNN Politics and Power Series. Thank you guys for tuning in. It is your Thursday at 1:00 PM Eastern. And today we are bringing back a guest that has been on the show several times. Noreen Dworkin is the founding editor for VoxPopuli.com. You know, it's an independent news outlet that covers West Orange County, so four main areas of West Orange County, Ocoee, Winter Garden, Windermere, as well as Oakland. And she's bringing a very important story as it relates to news media. And that's the reason why we were bringing her in here. This is a combination of both politics and power because this relates to the Winter Garden City Commission. They recently passed a resolution that has very narrowly restricted news media access, what members of the media are allowed to do as it relates to their commission meetings and the media's access to the city commissioners themselves. So without further ado, I'm going to bring in Noreen so we can talk about it in more detail. This is something you guys are going to want to know about because if the city of Winter Garden is doing it, it might be happening in other places too. So welcome back to the show, Noreen.
Thanks so much for having me.
Absolutely. So, you know, kind of walk us through this decision. Like, how did we get here?
Well, the city manager says that it was a lack of decorum on a national scale that led to the city commission deciding to update substantially a 2006 resolution that mainly dealt with how citizens comported themselves at commission meetings. And the 2006 resolution said nothing about how the media interacted with city commission officials. It was mostly how citizens would behave themselves and allow city commissioners to conduct the business of the meeting. But fast forward to 2023 and suddenly we have a laundry list of things that the media can no longer do, such as follow city commissioners for interviews, to request comments, to get questions answered. Media now has to go through a public information officer. And I used to attend city commission meetings regularly. And I used to be able to sit in the very front row and film. And now I will be off to the side filming. So it looks like I'm going to be upgrading my equipment so I can get a good catch for what's going on. The other key change is that media can no longer stand at the podium and ask questions of the public officials there, which is something that I used to do when I couldn't get them on the record.
Interesting. That's very interesting. So yeah, guys, this is something that is a bit alarming. When Noreen first approached us with the story, I said, yeah, we definitely want to get you on the show to discuss this because the first thing that came to mind was the First Amendment and not only free expression, but also kind of the whole concept of freedom of the press. Like, there has to be a way for members of the media to hold, you know, elected officials accountable. And we've been saying this since 2020, between my conversations with you, my conversations with our colleague Angel Perry, who we had on for the Let's Clarify series. One of the things we always stress to our audience is do your research and harass your elected officials because it's important to do it at the local level. Because the folks that are at the federal level have a lot more responsibilities on their hands that they can't necessarily take as quick of an action on because they're, you know, the procedures are a little bit different at the federal level. But if you can apply pressure at the local level, you can see change a little more immediately, if that makes sense.
Well, harassment, I think, is really in the eye of the beholder. It says very clearly in this new resolution, "Media are not allowed to heckle and harass," which, you know, part of... I would hate to think that media really harass public officials. But one of the things that's really concerning to me is that part of the resolution says that media cannot follow public officials in search of interviews, in search of comment, to get their questions answered. And so a public official who really doesn't want to speak to media on any particular issue, for a journalist to go and follow them, they could then turn around and say, oh, well, you're harassing me. And that is, you know, that could be in the eye of the beholder. And it is certainly in standard news gathering practice for a journalist to follow a public official. According to the government law experts that we talked to, you know, right out to the, you know, from the commission meeting, right out to their car to get answers to their questions. Now, the city commission did remove one of the most egregious phrases from the resolution, and that was unwanted interactions, which is, you know, truly in the eye of the beholder. As one local journalist told me when I was talking with them ahead of the meetings, like, every time I show up, it's unwanted.
Exactly.
But again, they left in following, which, you know, to seek out an interview and to get comments and questions answered, you have to sometimes follow people because they will sometimes walk away from you. And standard news gathering technique is, you know, sometimes you have to be a little persistent and follow them to get the answers to your questions. Offensive communications are also left in the resolution. And again, that will be in the eye of the beholder as are personal attacks. Right before this was passed, I stood up and made a statement in public comments. And I called out the mayor of Winter Garden for trampling on constitutional rights. This is not the first time that he's done this. One time, he ousted a citizen for not standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which attracted national attention to Winter Garden. So he could decide that that was a personal attack on him. And for that, reporters could be ousted, banned from meetings for a cooling off period. That becomes problematic.
Absolutely. And I thought that was very interesting when he first sent the information to me. Because I was like, like you said, you know, in the eye of the beholder. When we say harass your local elected officials, we don't literally mean that. We literally, you know, you as viewers, hopefully you're not taking that literally. But we mean hold them accountable, like, ask those questions. And, you know, if you're someone who watches our series and you're a member of the news media like we are, you know, something like this is very important because you have to be able to follow them after their press conferences, especially if they don't have structures in place for media availabilities thereafter. And the email you had sent, Noreen, you made a good point. I don't know if it was in the email or in the article you wrote, but, you know, the city of Orlando doesn't have procedures like this, Orange County, like, a lot of the other major areas in central Florida, they don't have something like this, resolutions like this in place because they understand that the media, like, they're there to ask questions. They're there to provide other information to the public that may not get covered in a council meeting or a board of commissioners' meeting. And, you know, or something needs to be explained in more depth than is allowed in two minutes for public comment. You know what I mean? That's something that's very important. And I mean, the one sliver of good news is that they did kind of remove that one bit of questionable clause. But we're going to take a quick commercial break, guys. We're going to keep the conversation going. But when we get back, Noreen, I do want to kind of talk to you about what are some steps going forward that, you know, regular citizens can do or we as members of the media should be doing. So guys, stay tuned. We will continue the conversation in a moment. We will be right back.
I'm not picking it up. You pick it up.
I'm not picking it up.
Well, somebody's got to pick it up.
I'll pick it up. They're clean.
Because my hiney's clean. Oh, yeah, I'm Charmin clean. That's how I know they're clean.
Charmin Ultra Strong is woven like a washcloth and just cleans better.
Yeah, I'm Charmin.
The kid does have a point.
Enjoy the go with Charmin. And for an extra clean finish, try Charmin Flushable Wipes.
And we are back to the FNN Politics and Power Series, guys. We're talking with Noreen Dworkin, who's the founding editor of Vox Populi. So, Noreen, kind of with everything that you've laid out, you know, what is the next step going forward? Like, how can we, what can be done, if anything, with regards to this?
Well, for us at Vox Populi, our news gathering is not going to change. Our legal experts have assured us that we're on very solid legal ground with our practices in terms of the way we approach public officials and even in terms of utilizing the public comment section for questioning public officials. Now, our people have said, you know, public officials are under no obligation to give us an answer at that time. But of course, public officials are under no obligation to give a reporter an answer at any time. So that's not anything different. So our practices will not change at all. We will see how the city of Winter Garden reacts to that. What I would encourage people to do is what I always encourage people to do is to be aware. Come to city commission meetings, participate in the process, pay attention to what city officials are doing. And when you see something that looks amiss, to actually come and speak up and say something. Because I shouldn't be the only one speaking up to say that this is unconstitutional. There were, you know, many other people in the room. The city's attorney signed off on this, which absolutely flummoxed the legal experts that we talked to. You know, this is clearly unconstitutional. Every single legal expert that we ran this resolution by, including a constitutional law expert at the University of Florida, a governmental law expert here in Maitland, and the legal team over at the First Amendment Foundation said that this was clearly unconstitutional. And I made a statement myself before this resolution passed. And I encouraged the commissioners to vote against this resolution as pertains to the rules for the media. So other people have to, you know, get engaged. And when they see things like this, to, you know, stand up and speak up and say, hey, you know, this stuff isn't right.
Yeah, absolutely. And for those in Winter Garden, or if you know somebody in Winter Garden that this directly impacts, by all means, let them know about it because a lot of the local meetings, they kind of fly under the radar because not a lot of people pay attention to them. For those who are watching this and you saw like the B-roll that we loaded for you guys, if you noticed, the B-roll came from Vox Populi. Because in our research, I couldn't find any footage of the Winter Garden city commission meetings in the past. Like, I didn't find any. Didn't see any photos, didn't see any video footage. So...
There's a reason for that. The city refuses to video record the meetings. At one point, early on in our, when we were just starting out, I caught them misrepresenting something that I said in the minutes. And as a result, they now make audio of city meetings readily available. But they refuse to videotape the meetings. So I take that as a responsibility to the public, and we videotape the meetings. The only video record of city commission meetings is the video record that we provide. And you can find that on our website at WinterGardenVox.com. We get it up after the meeting just as soon as we possibly can. And it's always on our front page. And we have a YouTube channel, but the link is on our front page under Local Government Matters.
Absolutely. And take a look at your screen below. If you guys are interested in checking out Vox Populi or checking out the footage of those meetings, it's WinterGardenVox.com. But I did want to kind of find out from you, because you've been following this for a minute. Like, what is your assessment of, like, some of the neighboring areas as well? Like, you, of course, not only cover Winter Garden, are you seeing this in, you know, Windermere and Oakland and Ocoee as well?
No, I called and I emailed my contacts over in Oakland and in Windermere and in Ocoee. And while many of the municipalities, oh, and I reached out to Winter Park and in Orlando, they have rules for civility. Everybody wants the commissioners and public officials to be able to conduct their business in a very smooth fashion. And, you know, no argument, you know, there's the city and the town business that needs to get done. And, you know, nobody wants their meetings to be disrupted. So, you know, no argument from me, although, you know, full disclosure, at one point, I did disrupt a Winter Garden meeting to ask why a couple of commissioners were not wearing their masks at the height of a pandemic. So, but the other rules that cities may have pertain to how elected officials deal with the media. It's not the media dealing with elected officials, it's when the media is, when they're contacted, they would prefer that elected officials, you know, stay on the same message. So they would prefer that elected officials go through, you know, Communication Director so that everybody is on the same, you know, has the same messaging. But the Pointer Organization says that even that is not legally enforceable. Companies, government agencies, they have those in employment contracts, but it's no challenge on a First Amendment challenge has ever succeeded. So people don't necessarily understand that it may say that in your employment contract, but nobody can really stop you from speaking to the media. That's why there are whistleblower protections. And the idea that journalists coming into Winter Garden now have to go through a public information officer in order to set up an interview with a city official is not legally enforceable, according to the Pointer Institute. So journalists cultivate sources. You know, it's really hard to develop relationships with our city officials, you know. I have people in my phone that I can text or call when I need quick comment. I, you know, news moves fast, you know, you need something quickly. I don't, you know, sometimes a story just won't wait until the next day. You need a quote quickly. So it's just not possible to wait for PIO to get back to you. And the people on the other side, the city officials, they need to have free access to the press because sometimes they know things that they need to be able to get out to the public, and they shouldn't have a filter. So it protects them as well.
Very interesting point. The, you know, the fact that you're saying it's not something that's enforceable. Because one thing I do notice in dealing with Orange County government, they have a PIO office, but it's a team of them. It's not just one person. And it's, they still get their news out quickly, probably because it's a team of them. It's, I want to say it's about three or four of them that usually work together to get press releases out to members of the media. They facilitate the interviews, whether, you know, virtually or in person when press conferences are going on. So that's interesting.
And I bet somebody's always on call.
Yes.
Or seven. So news breaks at 3:00 in the morning, somebody's got, you know, somebody's on for that. But a smaller city like Winter Garden, they don't even have a social media presence, really, you know. When I was putting together this story, the day before this was going to a vote, I sent questions to the city manager. And I didn't get a response until the day after the vote, you know, was taken. So, you know, now that may just be because, you know, they didn't feel like, you know, sending answers because they didn't want to comment on it until after the vote. But like I said, news moves fast and you can't wait sometimes 24 hours. Sometimes you just need somebody immediately. And that's why I have city officials' phone numbers in my cellphone because there are people that I need to contact immediately. And having that extra filter, while I understand the need for uniform messaging and everybody, you know, speaking the same, you know, this is our city's message, you know, sometimes that's just not going to work. You know, for a marketing campaign, you know, here's what our city's message is. You know, we're always going to talk about this, you know, Winter Garden, this little city with a juicy past. Everybody should say that. Worked way as a marketing thing. In terms of, you know, tell me, tell me why, you know, you're passing this unconstitutional rule against journalists, not everybody needs to be saying the same thing, you know.
Very true. Some people might have dissenting opinions and that's kind of important, you know, in a case like that. Because then you would want to find out, like, why, you know, what was the majority for, like, you know, what was going on there. But very interesting. And I guess I'm going to take one more commercial break, guys. We're going to kind of close things out, round things out with Noreen. And of course, you guys know I always ask the personable questions. So we'll find out a little bit more about what Vox Populi has got going on and, you know, talk a little bit more about Noreen the person. I always like to talk to my guests and kind of ask them a couple of questions so the viewers can get to know a little more about you. So stay tuned, guys. We're going to take one final commercial break and we will be right back.
Welcome to Parts Pass. I'm Stan and I'm the founder. We create a Parts Pass for anyone and everyone who owns a vehicle. It's free to use and free to download. Take a picture of your car. Our AI system will help decode it. Enter a part that you might need, submit an order, and have it shipped the next day. We would love for you to join our community for do yourselfers, car enthusiasts, and just anyone that owns a vehicle. Subscribe now and we'll see you later.
All right, we are back to the FNN Politics and Power Series, closing things out with Noreen Dworkin, who's the founding editor of Vox Populi. So obviously, this story's out. And guys, be sure to go to WinterGardenVox.com to actually read the whole story so you guys can get Noreen's take on it, hear quotes from the various sources that she spoke to. And if I'm not mistaken, is there a link to the resolution in that article?
There is. The new language of the resolution is linked in the article, yes.
Yeah, so you guys can get to read the resolution in black and white and see for yourself what was voted on, what was approved. And then go harass them anyway. Like, go ask questions. Go and ask questions. You know, take advantage of the public comment, even if you're not a member of the media. Perhaps you're an ally of the media, if you will. If you're someone who values, you know, receiving impartial or independent news, which is what both of our media outlets represent. Vox Populi is independent. The FNN News Network, we're independent as well. You know, we don't bother with the slant. We don't have to. We're not owned by gigantic corporations. So, you know, if you want the unfiltered truth, by all means, hold your elected officials accountable. But I did want to, you know, kind of allow, you know, open the floor for you, Noreen, and kind of talk about what else Vox Populi has got going on or if you're open to sharing the next story that you're working on.
Oh, absolutely. Right now, we are deep into covering Ocoee's municipal elections. District 1 and District 3 city commission is up for reelection. We were very surprised when Larry Brinson Sr. announced that he was not going to run for reelection, and that opened up the seat. We have two candidates, Scott Kennedy and Chawante Hope Bellamy are both running for District 1. Mr. Bellamy is on the ballot as Hope Bellamy. And we have District 3, City Commissioner Richard Fersen, longtime commissioner. This will be his, he's running for his third term. He's being challenged by Shante Munz, who people might remember challenged Daniel Webster for the congressional district 11. So we're deep into that. And then, of course, the mayoral race suddenly got very interesting with Rusty Johnson being challenged not only by George Oliver, but by newcomer Chris Atkins.
Interesting. That's a lot. There's a lot going on there.
There is a lot going on. And we've had this story to ourselves, actually. Nobody else has really been covering the races. So we've had, we have features about Chris Atkins. We broke the story that Shante Munz doesn't actually live in Ocoee. She says she does, but her homestead is in Orlando. And we broke a story about Commissioner Oliver breaking some campaign finance laws.
Yeah. So, you know, and we had Commissioner Oliver on, I want to say, three weeks ago or so to talk about that. So obviously, you know, if you guys haven't seen that interview, by all means, check us out. Visit our YouTube channel, FNN News TV, to check that out. And make sure you subscribe while you're over there. Click that little bell. And if you're watching us on Facebook, by all means, hit like on the respective page that you're watching us from because we livestream on our Florida National News and our FNN News TV Facebook pages. So by all means, tune in and check us out. And once again, I'm going to encourage you guys to bookmark WinterGardenVox.com and stay tuned for all of the stories that Noreen and her team are constantly working on because they specialize in in-depth journalism. They do investigative journalism. So if that is your cup of tea, by all means, bookmark them and follow them. Sure. So if there's anything else you want to say to our audience that we haven't covered, by all means, please.
Well, I encourage everybody who is out there and local. We, there's going to be a political forum tonight at City Hall in Ocoee. The three candidates for Ocoee mayor, Rusty Johnson, Chris Atkins, and George Oliver are going to be answering questions from residents. People can come in person. It will be livestreamed and shown on Ocoee TV. This is how democracy works, when people, you know, get involved and pay attention and ask questions. This is the opportunity to ask your officials if, you know, all the questions that you want to ask. You know, we have a real race here for, you know, for mayor. You know, two people who've been in local government for a while and somebody who is brand new. You know, all have very different visions for the city. And this is your opportunity to, you know, ask them questions, but certainly tune in. You have an opportunity to send in questions at citizens@ocoee.org.
Got you. Citizens@ocoee.org. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Awesome. So you guys take note of that if you're in that area and you want to go and be active, go and be involved. We always, we at, you know, the Politics and Power Series and, you know, Florida National News, FNN News Network in general, we always encourage civic engagement. Like, be aware of what your elected officials are doing, be aware of what's being voted on because it directly impacts you. Yes, presidential elections are important, but the municipal elections are as well. And that one directly affects you, like, immediately.
Absolutely. I mean, these are the politicians that you can literally reach out and touch. One of the things Commissioner Fersen said last night, he's running for reelection in District 3, is he drives on the same roads, he shops in the same publics, you know, he lives in the neighborhood with his constituents, you know. We all pay attention to national politics, but none of us, you know, live down the block from Governor DeSantis. None of us live down the block from Joe Biden, you know. But here we are, living in the same city with our elected officials. This is the best opportunity to make a difference where you live. If you are annoyed by the traffic, these are the people who can do something about that. If you're, you know, you're tired of the overgrowth and living in Winter Garden, I can tell you it is, you know, getting saturated. These are the people who make those decisions. So this is where you pay attention and you stand up and you make a difference. These are the people you vote for.
Well said. Hashtag might drop. Thank you so much for joining us on the show again, Noreen. You're always welcome to join us. You're, you're always welcome to join us. Um, you know, always keep us posted of what's going on out there. And we here at Florida National News and F and the News TV will continue to keep you guys posted as to what's going on, um, throughout, you know, throughout Florida. So be sure again to bookmark us, florida national news.com, fnnnnews.com. Be sure to like our Facebook pages, subscribe to our YouTube channel, F and the News TV. And we will keep the shows going. You will catch us here next Thursday. Noreen, thank you so much. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you so much for having me. It's always a pleasure to be here with you, Melissa.
Absolutely. And guys, thank you for tuning in to this week's edition of F and N Politics and Power Series. I will catch you next week. Have a great rest of your Thursday as well. Take care and have a good one.